Elson, here.
Box.
Here.
Berry's.
Here.
Baggerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Eight present, one excused.
Stand for the pledge of leave.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America in the name of the Constitution of this country, with the ready to address this for all.
We have a short agenda, but that doesn't mean it's going to be a short meeting, but are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? There being none. I will say this is the council workshop, and the council will be receiving information and ask questions of the presenters. The public computer lists it only. I'll call on Kyle Box to start the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council members. Tonight, we're going to talk about the most recent updates on the Connect Wilmer Initiative. First, I want to take a step back and thank numerous people that have been involved with this process over the past a couple of years and really the last 12 months, really hands-on. First and foremost, thanks to the broadband committee. We have members from the broadband committee here this evening. Hometown Fiber is here with us tonight. We'll hear a presentation from Holtman Mink as he's here helping us out with the project. And then we'll also introduce to the council representatives from Broadband MN and Silverlight, the ISPs that are interested in being a part of the network. So, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. The Connect Wilmer Initiative was an initiative to have a city-owned fiber optic infrastructure project aimed at providing high-speed, reliable internet access to every home, every business here in Wilmer. Overall, here's the agenda that we wanted to go through again tonight. So, we'll hear from myself from the city first. We'll ask Holtman Mink to come up, Hometown Fiber. Well, I'm going to touch on the industrial park grant that has ties to the fiber project as well. And we'll have some ISP introductions at the end. As we move through the project, one of the things we can start out by talking about is impactful infrastructure projects that the city has undertaken throughout recent years. I like to highlight these because it's important to understand that what cities do well is infrastructure, whether that's airports, wastewater treatment facilities, the structure of a Wilmer wire, rail access, making our industrial parks shovel-ready certified in our, really our gear, and our ramp-up of street improvement projects throughout the city. Each one of these projects carries their own significance and weight and value throughout the community, but these are truly infrastructure projects that address growth. They address economic development. They address safety and access for our residents. So, I like to put it still in people's mind as we go through the presentation and go over the material that to really tie a lot of this back to infrastructure that's at its core. That's what's being proposed tonight. But first, what is the Connect Wilmer Initiative? This was an initiative designed to help secure Wilmer's future by enhancing its internet infrastructure. Wilmer has long been known for its leadership in agriculture, technology, and industry. The city continues to build on this legacy with forward-thinking projects like Connect Wilmer. Fast, reliable, affordable internet service has become crucial for personal and professional growth. Recognizing this necessity, city staff and the elected city council members have taken proactive steps to get to this point and to ensure that the community has access to high-quality internet service that it deserves and that it's offered at reasonable prices. In today's world, fast, reliable, and affordable internet isn't a luxury. It's a necessity. It touches every part of our lives from how we work, how we learn, how we connect, how we prosper. Without it, you risk losing that legacy and being left behind. As we went through the project and talked about municipal-owned networks, we wanted to give a snapshot of what specifically what municipal network is going to be most likely across the country. Communities invest in these networks for a variety of reasons, whether it be economic development, improving access to education and healthcare, price stabilization, so on. All of these networks, they range from massive networks offering multi-gigabit services to hundreds of thousands of households, small towns. Each one of these dots is a municipal-owned network, whether that's a county, city, a joint powers, some type of public entity. As we go back, I should have highlighted somewhat the significance of some of these colors. So, yellow that you see up here is signified by retail services. Again, these are publicly-owned networks that offer direct service to residents and businesses. The orange dots, you can see some out in Washington, Colorado, with kind of high clusters there. Those are open access networks. That's the model that Wilmer is pursuing. We'll talk about open access here in a little bit. The purple shaded colors here are institutional networks, often owned by governments, counties, schools, hospitals, et cetera. And often what these networks do is they establish into broader municipal networks over time. So, you can see just located here right in Minnesota, south of the metro, you see the purple there. That's Carver County's fiber project that started probably 12, 15-plus years ago. That project has continued to expand, and now with more recent connections, they're actually bringing on residents and businesses as their network expands. So, again, this was just to kind of illustrate throughout the entire country, 795 communities have gone through this process at various levels and various network structures. I thought it was important to bring the council and whoever's watching and listening just to kind of give an iterate project evolution, a history of what we've gone through the last couple of years. So, back in the fall of 2022, the city received, put out a request for proposals to bring internet infrastructure to the industrial park. In the fall of '22, the city received three proposals for broadband projects in Wilmer. Each of these proposals vary and offered more than what the initial ask of bringing fiber just to the industrial park. The standout proposal to the broadband committee was from Hometown Fiber. Their proposal suggested not just bringing fiber to the industrial park, but to every home and every business here in Wilmer. And this project really, this proposal struck a chord with the broadband committee because this was when broadband projects were affluent throughout the entire county with their beacons and so on. The committee wanted to get more information before vetting, to vet and for making a recommendation to the city council. So, in the winter of 2022, the city went and undertook a mapping project to really see how the city of Wilmer was served. Look at that in a couple of slides. Moving on into 2023, that recommendation was brought to the city council in February to bring on Hometown or to move with that proposal. Hometown Fiber was brought on as the city's broadband consultant. And throughout 2023, we wanted to connect with experts in the field, specifically on open access. Is this doable for Wilmer? We wanted to make sure our due diligence was being, we were completing our due diligence to make sure that the proposal that you're seeing tonight is sound. Moving on into 2024, civil engineering contracts were agreed to. We have an operations agreement that is the governing document for how this network would run. ISP negotiations have been undertaken. We've done some community outreach throughout the summer and the fall, hitting up Rockin' Robbins, Welcoming League. And we did some public engagement, three public engagement sessions at the library. We've done some project branding as well. Going back to the mapping project, this mapping project was done late 2022, early 2023. And what this indicated to us is that Wilmer is predominantly served by coax cable, shaded in yellow. Over 7,000 parcels. As you look here, the red parcels here are both city-owned properties. It's the airport and wastewater treatment facility. Those properties at the time were not being served with reliable internet, which has since been remediated. Probably some of the, just as important are the blue parcels. Those are the parcels in the city limits that are receiving fiber services. Now, you look at somewhere these locations are at, you'll see the northeast side of the, or the top-right side of the map, northeast Wilmer, MDOT, civic center, county building, the jail, a high school, Bridgewater College to the west, and some property in the industrial park, and big box stores on the south of town. 23 parcels in total out of those 7,000-plus were receiving fiber services. Now, we understand and realize that this is, this was an old map at this point, right? We're 2025. So, we actually, with the assistance of Hometown, or Hometown went out and did our updated map of the city of Wilmer. Since 2022, five more connections to fiber have been made. Two out of those five are the city properties. The other ones had to do down by Mills Auto in that area of town. So, taking a step back, so not outside of city limits, we want to kind of give a perspective here on how fiber, what this map identifies is gigabits, metrical speeds that are being offered. So, if we look at the map here, here's Wilmer. Bead funding and other grant and other projects that the county has been undertaking, you can see where those connections are being made. Cities are being carved out because they are technically served under the guidelines of the grant. This isn't a knock towards the grant at all. That's offered through the state of Minnesota and the federal government. This is a fantastic opportunity to connect rural residents and rural residents. So, Wilmer doesn't qualify. So, that's what we talk about when we, at the beginning of the slide, we lose that risk of being left behind. As we zoom out, you can kind of get a greater impact or an idea of how these gigabit services are being connected. And this information is from Minnesota Keith's website as well. Further, these connections across Minnesota are being made. And each, a lot of these holes that you see maybe in west-central Minnesota are those carve-outs of communities. So, there's importance to being, making sure that Wilmer is connected and isn't going to risk being left behind, right? So, what's open access? Now, this is the model of infrastructure and internet service that the city of Wilmer is pursuing. An open access network is designed to allow multiple internet service providers or ISPs to use the same physical network infrastructure, in this case, owned by the city of Wilmer. The physical network infrastructure, such as fiber optic cables in this case, again, is owned by the city of Wilmer. The city in this case is not an ISP. We are not getting into business of selling internet. We are in the business of infrastructure. The open access model is for the, the infrastructure that's owned by the city offers access to this network on an open, non-discriminatory basis. This means that various ISPs or network operators can lease access to the network and provide service to customers. If an ISP can connect to the open access network, offer their own services, they handle customer acquisition, billing, support, while the underlying network infrastructure remains the same. Because multiple ISPs can use the same network, there is a greater opportunity for competition in the market. This can lead to better service options, lower prices, more innovation as different providers strive to attract and retain customers. And with it being owned by the city, proposed to be owned by the city under this model, the open access model often involves regulatory oversight to ensure that access is provided fairly adequately. The goal is to prevent monopolist practices and ensure that no single provider can dominate the network infrastructure. That's open access. Move through the project. This is the proposed updated, most up-to-date timeline that's being suggested. So, again, the council, we're at 2025. We've been working on this for quite some time, and we are at a point that this will come to the council table at a regular session to make a decision on how the council would like to proceed. And that's going out for bonds. So, phase one, which is identified here in the map, scheduled to take place in 2025. Phase two, the following year, and phase three, the north side of Wilmer, completing in 2027. This is a good opportunity, I think, too, to talk about the industrial park grant. The industrial park is located in the west part of Wilmer. The city is pursuing a federal economic development grant, the federal EDA. This is an industrial park grant for street and restoration, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main, and fiber. When the staff had the opportunity to sit down with federal EDA and talk about the project or the opportunity, we didn't necessarily think fiber was going to be brought up or wasn't initially part of the conversation until, until late in the conversation when we started talking about the open access network. EDA was excited about that and asked us to include the industrial park, include the fiber project within the industrial park grant. We did it. The total for everything, so streets, utilities, water, sewer, fiber. Entire grant is, submission was right around 5.6, 5.7 million. But the grant is, it's a 50-50 match, so half would be on the, for the construction portion only. 50% would be paid by the city, and then the other 50% would be reimbursed back to the city as those costs are incurred. But specifically carving out the fiber portion of the grant, this includes the build-out of the industrial park and the construction of the Network Operations Center, or the NOK. And we'll talk about what that is in a little bit, but essentially think of it as the brains of the operation. So, the construction cost for fiber in the industrial park, construction cost is right around 1.3 million. We do have a contingency built in there, 10%, and the fiber total for that project, including engineering costs, is right around 1.8 million. The federal share, again, is construction reimbursement only, which we would get a grant, up to a grant of more than $780,000. Now, we're kind of in limbo at this point on the status of federal grants. There's been a moratorium or a pause on federal grants. We're still waiting for guidance and conversations to occur between the city and EDA on how we are, what we are expected and how we can proceed with that. But it's an actual grant that has been submitted, and we are just waiting on next steps from the EDA. The city lets, in this situation, if the council decides to move forward with the project, how are we going to pay for it? What we're proposing is that the city would issue general obligation bonds that would finance the construction of the project. Network is construction with those bond funds. Subscribers that sign up to receive that service pay their internet bill to the providers in exchange for internet service. Providers pay a lease fee back to the city that provide that service on the network. At those revenues, the city would pay back the bonds with fees received from the ISPs, from the providers. Once those bonds are paid off, profits are reinvested back into the community and the network for ongoing maintenance and potential expansion. So, my last slide, before I turn it over, is to really summarize what we're trying to accomplish. So, investing in fiber infrastructure prepares communities not only for current demands, but also for future technological advancements. By focusing on scalability, reliability, and equitable access, communities can create a foundation that supports innovation, economic growth, and improved quality of life. As technology continues to evolve, robust fiber networks will be essential in ensuring that communities remain competitive, resilient, connected. Mr. Mayor, I'm now going to turn it over to Dylan, who's with Holtman Mink. He's going to walk you, the council, through some of the high-level engineering that we've put into the project so far. So, Dylan.
Kyle, are you going to take questions now, or are you, what you presented?
We can do that now, or we can do that at the end, Mr. Mayor. I'm open to, or if you'd like to do that.
I think I've got some questions up here.
Okay. And we will, we're going to cover... How about we wait maybe towards, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor? Because we're going to cover a lot more material with engineering, with Hometown Fiber, and maybe...
I can answer some of those questions.
It might answer some of those questions, and maybe once we get through Holtman Mink and Hometown Fiber, we could take a pause there before the ISP introductions. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Kyle So. I'm with Holtman Mink. I am the project design engineer. Been working very closely with both Kyle Box and Kyle Moorhead with Hometown Fiber, basically laying out the actual plans and specifications for the project. So, this first slide, some of you probably have seen this slide before. This was likely presented last year at a previous council meeting and or workshop. And also, you may not have seen this, but as Kyle had illustrated earlier in his presentation, obviously, the current proposal for the project is three phases. The blue slash purple area is phase one. That is the phase that is going to be proposed for 2025. Green is phase two, and the pink magenta is phase three in 2027. And then, I'm not sure if you can see it, but right around in the middle of the green, there is a red star. That is the NOK that Mr. Box has previously mentioned. So, just kind of dive into the plans just a little bit. This is just a little snapshot showing what would be installed with the project. This is a head hole. This particular one that is shown roughly about, you know, two and a half foot by four foot, wide about, you know, three feet deep, somewhere in there. Obviously, that is not the only size for the project. They range anywhere between, you know, a foot, foot and a half, all the way up to almost four to six foot. Currently, there's roughly right around 2,000 of these being proposed in just phase one alone. Locations, obviously, get a very drastic way, you know, in different parts of the city. Some are going to be in corners, some are going to be in the middle of the block. Moving into the actual layout of the project. So, during our right-of-way investigation, easement investigation, there have been some areas of 7,000 parcels that Mr. Box had mentioned where there currently isn't any existing right-of-way or easements where a road right-of-way would currently exist. So, in these areas, obviously, we have been discussing with the city and city staff on notifying property owners for those highlighted in those colors in order to obtain easements where the street right-of-way would exist so that the fiber facility can be installed. Currently, there's right around 70-ish parcels that are highlighted there. And the different colors there are actually the different type of documentation, documents that are going to be used in order to define what easement actually is. So, the red ones, those are going to be right-of-way flats. Greens are just exhibits. Yellow, which is actually the fire hall here, that's just a memo. And then, the blue, we're not doing anything with. There's actually no fiber being installed within that. Moving on, permits. So, all of these colored areas are areas where we are going to have to be obtaining permits from agencies such as MDOT, Candywide County, Wilmer Township, BNSF, DNR, and even Magellan. So, the green lines represent Highway 12 through downtown and out towards the industrial park. And then, there is also Highway 40 going out towards the airport and wastewater treatment facility. The light blue, those are representing county areas. So, you've got Seventh Street, County Road 41, Wilmer Ave, County Road 23, 19th Ave, County Road 15, County Road 5 on the west side out by Jennio, County Road 55, and then even 116. Yellow line up in the far northwest corner, that's Township. And then, all of the different colored dots, those are very specific locations. Red is BNSF permits, where we're actually be crossing underneath rail lines. Blue are actual crossings underneath Hawk Creek on the west side of town. There's a couple of those. And then, it's kind of hard to see, but there are four Magellan crossings where we'll actually be crossing underground oil lines. Obviously, we have already been working on doing these permit applications. They are in progress. However, just, we will be waiting on council action before finalizing these permits and actually submitting them to the appropriate agencies. And then, this is our title sheet. There's currently, I think, last time I checked, right around 600 of these sheets for just phase one alone. And that's just phase one. After that, I'm not sure if you have any questions for me, or if you want to turn it over to Kyle Moorhead.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Mayor, Council, city staff. I'm Kyle Moorhead with Hometown Fiber. And just giving you a recap of where we're at, this might be a little redundant, but it's a single fiber optic network serving the community with multiple internet service providers riding on it. So, think of it like a digital street where community's building a road. In this case, it's fiber, and multiple providers are offering service on it. The city of Wilmer owns the infrastructure. The infrastructure generates revenue, and it puts your future of connectivity in your own hands. E financials for phase one, 9.2 million is the construction. We're rolling out our models at 4% interest, and it brings about 1.2 million in total revenue. 770,000 is what is projected for principal and interest, and about 265 for operating maintenance with a margin of about 165. Our intent is to have the broadband committee be the governing oversight of these agreements with the ISPs and with setting the rates and different aspects of it. There's just some questions that came up since our last meeting was, what's the revenue? And what's the line for debt? So, the bottom line here is what we would consider the worst-case scenario or a low estimate in a more positive term. But that is a tracking where it peaks out at about 35%. Those numbers were based on some of the networks that we found across the community, or across the country that hadn't performed to expectation for a variety of reasons. Most of those networks were overlaid entirely by competing fiber networks after they were constructed. And so, the peak rate that they got or the average rate they got was right in that low 30 to mid-30 range, and it took quite a while for them to achieve it. So, that's the low number. Our anticipated line is the blue. And then, the best-case scenario or the optimistic view is based on some very real numbers and some statistics that we've been getting from other networks of this nature that have performed very well. And I think some of these numbers can be backed up a little bit by the ISPs that are here tonight as well. So, this is, another question that came up was taxpayer risk. Now, we did this for phase one. If you build it and do nothing with it, which is obviously quite unlikely, but let's say you do, $9.19 is the taxpayer risk. And then, our, the gray line here is sort of the risk threshold where it converts from, you know, to positive cash, where the risk to the taxpayers is eliminated by the revenue generated on the network. So, you can see on the lower, the lower number here, the worst-case scenario, you're looking at quite a ways out before that occurs and not very much margin for it if and when you do occur. But the other models track much higher, and so the risk factor is lower. And it all comes... And it all comes down to the percentage of take rate. And that has to do with how many subscribers you get based on how many properties you pass by with your fiber. And this is based on a $200,000 median household income. I was asked a little bit to talk about the NOC. There's been a lot of discussion about what the NOC is. So what the NOC is, is a location for ISP equipment and other, you know, fiber optic connections to make the network possible. It connects to the outside world, to the broader internet, as well as provide a place for, that's power friendly and secure and everything that the internet providers are seeking. We looked at a lot of different ways to do this. One of them was we went from anything from shipping containers to those concrete structures you see by cell towers all the way up to a full building. And when we were discussing this with the city, we discovered that there is a building out at the old wastewater facility that is there. And when we investigated it, we found, and we investigated other city properties, but this one really stood out as the fact that it has onsite generation that's adequate for power. So that's a big check for the ISPs to every done power. Its location is very good. It's centralized. It's built extremely well, as you would expect from a wastewater facility. So we didn't have any problems with it structurally or, you know, nothing. All the boxes were ticked on it. So we went ahead and proceeded with some modeling just to see, you know, what the cost effectiveness of it was. And it obviously is quite cost effective if you don't have to recreate all those things. As a Blave, we had one of our electricians at Hometown came out, checked out the generator, checked out the transfer switch, checked out the distribution, and been proceeding forward with the electrical side of this model. But up here on the left, you see these orange cabinets on the side. That's where the actual fiber comes in and terminates that goes to all the parcels. And then in the middle, you have some processing, processing the equipment that can be located, whether an ISP decides to get a rack or a cage or have an actual room, which are located up here and there. They have their options of how much they're going to need. And then around the perimeter are just some air conditioning units to cool it because all that technology generates an awful lot of heat. So as you all are probably quite aware, this is just the top down view of it. It allows for, you know, secure areas for the gear plus, you know, server side equipment, edge computing, and a little bit of AI. Can't go crazy with AI because of the power restrictions, but there's some there. And it really does connect Wilmer to the broader internet. And then Kyle Box had asked me to talk just briefly about some other opportunities. These are not negotiated, they're possible, right? So we've been talking to other communities around the Wilmer area, and they're kind of in the ballpark of if you build this facility and Wilmer goes forward with it, other communities are interested in connecting. It's a lot of talking right now. They're kind of waiting to see what you all do to see if there could be a joint power agreement made with somebody else. But the facility here is equipped in such a manner that those types of expansions are possible without having to add more facility and add more power. Leave it to Kyle Box. The questions.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's all right. Mr. Mayor, we'll pause there. And if there's any questions from you or the council on what you've heard so far, we'll
Kyle, can you go back to that map of Wilmer towards the beginning of your presentation? One that shows kind of current, yes, that one. So let me understand, the areas in blue right now, they have, they have fiber connections?
That's correct.
And so does that fiber run to coax at some point or like how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, sir. Ones that we observed when we were doing our mapping in the blue were direct fiber, meaning they have fiber service. And we could trace it back to a fiber network that is running through the community, right? So it isn't a hybrid where you'd have coaxial cable hitting an amp and then feeding fiber from there or vice versa, where fiber's fed out and then it's distributed in coax, which is a little bit more common. But these in the areas in blue were, were areas that had fiber optic service that was traceable back to a pure fiber network.
Okay. And then another question, so technology in general, but I think specifically this area of technology, it updates rapidly. There's new developments that make things that were just in our recent past obsolete very quickly. So, I mean, with the financial numbers that we're looking at, this is something that's going to have to stand the test of time a little bit. What does this look like in the future? You know, there's, there's going to be another thing coming along soon that makes internet even better and faster because it's going to run on, you know, Kit Kat bars or something like that. What, what does that look like? What do you foresee in the future?
Thanks, Counselor. So when, when we project and do designs and project, you know, different potentials and possibilities for technology, we always start looking at what is in R and D, what is being developed, and more importantly, why is that being developed? What's the market driver for it? Everything coming down the pike is, has to do with optics and photonics. So we're even getting down to photonic chips that will run on optical connections inside circuits and motherboards and things like that. So things are going to exponentially speed up, but the whole thing is based on optical connectivity. Some of the very interesting things going on in that field, by the way. So we're excited about that and we keep an eye on it. Future proofing is something that's a little bit different, right? You can pick a cable, like if you go back to the 20s, 1920s, you, you look at that and say, well, twisted pair, you, telephone cable was like the cutting edge for telegraph and telephone, and that served for 90 some years until the demand for what that technology could deliver was ran out. So what we do with that is we lean on people like, well, the make and the engineers, and we say, hey, give us a robust conduited system. One of the things that the telephone folks did in the 20s is very little of it was put into conduits or any type of structure that could be reused for different cables. So when we look at the fiber network, we're looking at not only placing fiber, but how much fiber goes in there. And the biggest challenge you have is getting that right for what you spend today versus what you may need tomorrow. So the, the way we future proof that is by putting it in conduit and burying it underground so it's secure. Those are two things that really significantly advance the future proofing of the network. Whether the fiber cable is, you know, obsolete in five years or not is a hard likely no. At 10 years, no, 20 years, no. Beyond that, you know, tech, tech changes so quickly that other pressures will come in, but you do have this physical piping infrastructure that you can pull out the oldest technology and put in the newest if you so choose. We don't, we don't see that happening in the near future at all.
Sure. So definitely decades or at least a decade before that would happen.
That, that's our speculation on it now.
And then we'd even have the groundwork laid for whatever will be coming next.
Yeah. A lot, a lot of interesting things are happening in wireless technology, but we've always said and continue to say that, you know, the convenience of wireless requires wires. And that's no different here. You'd have to have community infrastructure to give the wireless performance you see. So with that, I mean, even the satellite stuff has to hit the ground as rapidly as possible to get into a fiber network to function.
Do you use six way or four way in these applications?
You mean splitting of the fiber?
No, the concrete piping that has six.
Oh, sure. Sure, yeah. So some of the paths are just single conduited paths, right? Just a single pipe. Other, we think multi duct, which, you know, can range anywhere from two to 12. This kind of depends on what that route is doing. So as you get into the specifications, you'll see more and more of that detail, you know, this street has this one and this street has another.
Change.
Yeah. So in our trunk lines where the highest concentration of fiber optic strands exist, we have two conduits and we're planning on using one, but the cost to put it in is the most expensive part, not the conduit itself. So in those cases, we did add a little bit of capacity in those routes so that we could swap without having to take anything down. And so in those critical routes, you don't ever want them to come down. If you can avoid it, you would just jump to the other pipe and build and then switch over.
Yeah, and around the infrastructure will be directionally boring then?
Most of it will be, in this case, directionally bored, correct. I think when you get out into the, some of the more open areas out, you know, toward the airport and down toward the wastewater plant, you might be able to get away with plowing, but for the most part in town, it'll be bored.
Just have one more question then, and if you can go to the other map that shows kind of the coverage for the state of Minnesota and the, those open spots there where, you know, there's a lot of communities in our area that have been, that aren't currently being served, those that are getting left behind like we are. You had mentioned a little bit, Kyle, that there might be other communities that are just not talking, like there's, there's no guarantees there. So obviously, like, we haven't seen a lot of agreements like this in the past. Are you familiar with other communities that, that have come up with some agreements like this? And I'm assuming the reason that they would build off of our system is because of the NOC, like that would...
Well, it's also your size, right? I mean, if you look at your surrounding communities, they're much smaller and they don't have the economic capacity to even start something small. You know, they're, they're kind of dependent on not only the economic development of your area, but, you know, they're dependent on your technical capacity too. So if you were to go forward with this, it's very likely that they'll start joining when they see your success, but they're, they're, they're not going to take a risk and do it themselves at this point because they're just too small. They don't have the population density and the numbers to support it. They can't attract ISPs, they can't attract infrastructure like this. But yes, the NOC is a key part of it. If you don't have that, you're, you're not going to be able to really tie into these other communities with efficiency.
And then any kind of idea, like those agreements, I'm assuming come like with some sort of financial benefit. Wilmer, have you seen anything in other states, any?
Well, I think, you know what, would be a better person to better, I'm not trying to shug this, but seriously, the, the person here to answer this, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it's the folks from Silver Lion and Anthony Willow from Broadband. They've got a lot of experience working with multiple communities, right? And so there's a lot of hypotheticals in Minnesota, and yes, other communities do have joint powers agreements that connect in and out of all these other networks, but they're all a little bit unique and different than what we're proposing here. So I think an ISP that's here today might be a driver of progress to ask, answer the question.
Kyle, you threw out a couple of numbers and Dan, I'd like to, if you could, explain those again a little bit, the 1.3 million, 1.8 million, what were those?
Are we talking about the industrial park?
Well, yeah, yeah, the costs.
So I have in my notes on the screen, so the industrial park grant, again, located in phase one. So the entire industrial park project, which includes streets, stormwater, sanitary sewer water, and fiber, that entire project, we budgeted at a little over 5.6 million. The grant is for a 50/50 match on construction costs only. The fiber portion of that grant is total, so construction, contingency, engineering, is just under 1.8 million, so 1,794,000. The 50/50 match on the fiber portion only, again, just for the construction, is right around 700, just under 750,747. Again, that would be a city, the way that the grant is set up is that the city incurs those costs and then as the project is built, receive reimbursement back as expenses are paid.
Regarding that grant, any kind of timeframe? Have we talked to them?
Yeah, we have. Well, instead of giving a long answer, I'll give a short answer is at this time, we do not have a timeframe. We have communicated with them. There's just not any, any definitive response back at this point.
They, I mean, they're part of that freeze.
Yeah, so I should have, thank you, Councilmember Allison, I should have clarified that. So I'll back up just a quick step. I guess I will make this a longer answer. So when we had initially applied for the grant, the city was, this particular region that for EDA was all of Minnesota and Illinois, I believe. And this project was one of the only, if not the only, project on their docket. So we felt very confident. I mean, obviously, we go through all the same steps, submit the material. We were anticipating before federal freeze on funds to maybe have a response by February of this year or March of this year. So our initial reaction or anticipation, probably late December, early January, but that has since changed. We're still waiting for confirmation on how we can proceed with the grant or if it's going to be approved or not.
Just in light of that, and I think, I think you've asked this question already, but I'll ask it again with, they're asking us, wanting us to make a decision here within the next couple of months, soon, one way or the other, and to know whether that grant would be available or not would be very helpful as part of that decision. But do you have any, any comment? If we move forward and the grant is on hold, then we wouldn't have the opportunity, correct? I mean, because there, I know there's requirements before you start agreeing.
Yeah, that, that's correct. So the way that this project is work, would work, as we look at phase one, internally, we've been referring to the industrial park grant as phase one A. Has to be a separately bid project. It has to be by Build America by America, so has to be all American products, I mean, all tied with grants. So there's different stipulations that would apply. So if, if we do choose to wait on the grant process to unfold, again, we want to hear, hope that we hear that soon, but we would like to, what we're proposing or would be proposing is that we would move forward, forward with both projects at the same time. Both projects would be funded and built, since they ultimately intertwine. The industrial park grant lives within phase one, right? So if the council, I think we play that one a little closer to our chest and see what, you're back from federal EDA, it's hard to speculate on what to expect at this point. But we would, yes, that will be communicated once we have an answer.
I have two questions. First was for you, Kyle Box. Now on this phase one, just for industrial parks. Separating that from the residential, we could just build that up, still qualify for that grant, use all the money from industrial park fund, see how that goes before we move it over to the residential side?
Thank you, Councilmember Butterfield. Technically, yes, that is an option. However, we caution that it's not a profitable option. We do not make the number of connections necessary within the industrial park if we're excluding residential neighborhoods and businesses from phase one. We're unlikely to see any profit on continued operations or ongoing maintenance that would come along with it. Now, if we have the opportunity to pay with everything in cash for the development, obviously the, the risk of carrying debt is gone because it's paid for. But now we have to have a conversation with ISPs because you've made that market extremely small and the opportunity for ISPs to acquire customers could be limited on the number of potential hookups they would have at just the industrial park. So it's an option that we've So it's an option that we've lightly talked about, but the model that we're pursuing and having multiple ISPs offer service on the network, we might run into constraints on billing this or buy-in from ISPs to offer service on such a narrow market.
My other question's for Kyle Moorhead. If you could bring it back to that slide where you had the bond at 770,000, I believe the maintenance at 265,000?
Yeah.
Got that one there. Now, you're talking about 770,000 annually would be the, the bond payment, correct?
Yep.
And 265,000 would be what we'd need to operate and maintain that per year, correct?
Correct.
So, and that comes up a little over a million dollars, we could buy that, but it all comes up roughly $86,000. At the very beginning of this, and now I'm just shooting from the hip again, it was talking, city was going to get $15 a month per ISP. Just off of those numbers alone, we're going to need about 5,800 customers to break even.
Well, I think it's no longer at 15 to make the numbers work. I mean, you know, they're, we're basing it on percentages of the sales that the ISPs have.
But I was just going off of what we were told at the very beginning, it's going to be about 15,000.
We targeted at 15, it, it became pretty clear when we started getting into the numbers that those, it was going to have to be more coming from the ISPs. And so our discussions with the ISPs, you know, started at that point, like it's percentage based.
So what would be the estimate that we would need just to break even, you know, to have for customers, you know, just off of those numbers alone, that were, we want to be hitting on there?
Yeah, again, worst case scenario, or the low estimate of take rate puts you under a million, the high estimate is 1.2. When you factor the maintenance on there, you know, this worst case scenario gets really close to a zero-sum game.
So how many customers will that be though?
Well, you're looking at on the top rate, on Phase One, at about 60% here, and that puts us at, let me look here, a little over 3,000 total available with subscribers being about 14, 1500, right in that area, high 14, low 15. The projected take rate in the middle is about 1400, 1300 to 1400. So there's, when you get up into those higher percentages, it's not a lot of difference in quantity of subscribers.
It's just for Phase One, correct?
Just Phase One, yeah. We, we have the other projections for Phase Two and Three as well. The numbers get more for construction, more subscribers, more revenue, lower risk, is how that goes. I think one thing to, to go back on too is on how we're structuring or propose to structure the bonds. Again, it would be a general obligation bond, estimated at this time 9.2 million, not including the, so that's, that is not including the industrial park, so that's assuming all the costs of Phase One. But the way we're structuring it is deferring into principal payments for, for three years. What this allows us to do is to build up subscribers, allows ISPs to build up subscribers to ensure that we have enough of a tack or a user base for when that first principal payment would be made after that third year. It would be the same structure as of right now, that would be the same structure for each bond issuance in '25, '26, '27.
The 4% interest is that on the bond?
Yes.
We'd also then be holding revenue from, from sales from ISPs, right? Or from, at least from ISP, that would also be interest-bearing, I'm assuming for us.
The interest portion from ISPs?
So we're waiting three years before we're making payments?
Sure.
During those three years, we're collecting revenue from ISPs?
Yes, yes, that would...
We're going to have, we're going to make income.
Correct.
Just to clarify, we go back, you said 9.2 on construction of Phase One and it didn't include...
Yeah.
It didn't include the industrial park?
Correct.
Okay.
So if...
Industrial park grant.
The industrial park grant, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So if, if this industrial grant, industrial park grant is awarded to the city of Wilmer, we're looking at about 1.7 to 1.8 reduced off of that 9.2.
So I had asked this before at another workshop, city, some of the buildings have internet. We drop the current provider and go to our own fiber and choose whoever's the provider then?
It's an opportunity for the city. We're not obligated to, in the network operations agreement, just in memory of Councilmember Fairley, it's not necessarily an obligation that the city would have to take. We do have agreements in place about how the city is connected. It's a three-year, a three-year agreement that would expire already next, next year already, obviously technically, but we're not obligated to switch services, but we absolutely have the opportunity to.
Do we?
If it's a better, it would be a better service or a like service, it would be an opportunity we would look at, but I would like to need to confer with, with Jonah, all right, Information Systems Coordinator, on what, on, on security and specifications that the city would need, and a lot of those would be in conversations with ISPs to make sure that the security, the build-out for the city would be incorporated into that, the service that the city is given.
How much have we spent so far on engineering for what we've done?
Yeah, that's a great question. Total project, I'll break it down, I'll start with the big number and break it down from there. So total project year-to-date, we are floating, rate or close to about $675,000, and that's about what we've expensed over the last two and a half years. 403,000 of that was for the civil engineering contract with Bolton and Mink, and probably close to 200 or a little over 200,000 on network architecture and services provided by Hometown Fiber. There's a variety of other contracts or services that the city has paid for, whether that's legal review, bond council review, some project branding, some outreach, so it's about where we're at.
So if another company came into town, like Cardi or Spectrum or Intel, they wanted to put fiber in, they can do all the engineering themselves, wouldn't they?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Kyle.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, Anthony, I'd like to introduce the council to Anthony Will. He has been following very closely along, working with Hometown Fiber and, and watching our project grow and develop, and we'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Anthony to the council.
Welcome, Anthony. Thank you. Thank you, council, thank you, community members for being here. This is, this is an exciting conversation to have. Now, I, I'm going to tell you, I'm, I'm just down the road in Hutchinson, that's where Broadband's based, and I'm kind of a off-the-cuff, no BS kind of guy, right? Out in the middle of nowhere, we got to get it, right? And Wilmer's looking like you're taking this, get this project done. Now, I'll tell you a little bit about Broadband, give you just a real short and sweet, hopefully there's a file that they get a printout.
Yes, they've got a copy.
Yeah. I'll go over that real quick. Been around for over 20 years, we're actually at Broadband Corp celebrating our 20th year this year. We operate our own fiber-to-the-home network that we privately finance, so I understand exactly all the pain that you guys are looking at right now. We're Yahoo going to have that note paid off this year, now it's when we actually get to benefit from all of this. We'd like the opportunity to partner with you guys, this community, to make this happen be a reality for your community. Now, there were a few questions that were brought up, and I think I might be in a unique position to answer or bring a little bit of more information to it. I like the, the comment about picktacks, because you might not be very far off. In my opinion, being in this industry now for almost 30 years, the next technology that will replace fiber is likely going to be, we're getting real sci-fi here, teleportation. It's going to be quantum entanglement. That is not happening in the next 20 years, at least not in this piece, not in this device, right? So the fiber optic infrastructure has legs, it's going to be around for a long time, right? And that investment is going to be viable and then take on, add on to it, the conduit aspect of this build-out. Nothing's future-proof, right? But you're doing your due diligence and making the appropriate investments to bring that as close to a reality of future-proof as possible, in my opinion. You know, the, I also can speak to wireless, right? That's actually the core of Broadband Corp, we're a wireless company. We put infrastructure on cellular towers and then we put receivers on our customers' homes. Our current customer base is mostly farmers, people that live outside of city limits. We do service a few communities, nothing the size of Wilmer. We actually don't service the city of Hutchinson even though our field operations are, mostly because the city of Hutchinson has been, in the past, difficult to work with. So with that being said, that's the only reason we don't offer services in Hutchinson, right? Now, wireless and fiber are actually the same technology. Wireless is just a lower frequency of light. Same thing goes on the coax, I'm going to be straight up with you. Only difference between these three technologies is the medium it's going across, it's all R amp, it's all light, just a different frequency. Now, we've seen through history, twisted copper, right, plain old telephone, right? Show of hands, who actually has a telephone in their house, an active telephone? And we got, we got two, we got three, three people, four, okay. I, I bring that up because this is a perfect example of what, how the city needs to actually make this decision is, can you afford it? Will you get the customers to make this happen? The four people out of, I'm going to say 50, we'll call it, we'll just call it 10%. Those 10% are not going to get this fiber network, they will not be your customers, right? They have the technology, it does what they need it to do, and they don't need to change, right? The rest of your competition is going to be the local telephone company, your cable company, and T-Mobile specifically. That's who you're competing with. You know, there's a lot of, whatever you go on this site or that site, yeah, there's 11 providers or something in town, yeah, not really. You have three. You have a telephone company, a cable company, and you have T-Mobile, right? Now, the coax infrastructure, it has legs, there is still room for that infrastructure to grow, right? But it is going to be dwarfed and already is dwarfed by fiber. It, just like Twisted Pair, its time is coming to an end, it's just not quite there yet, right? Same thing with your phone company. That technology, there hasn't been any real advancements in DSL, that's the underlying technology for internet delivery across Twi- Twisted Pair. There hasn't been a real advancement in that arena in almost 10 years, so, right? Everything's going to fiber, fiber and wireless. So then that means really what it boils down to in the long term, just trying to get my crystal ball out here, coax probably has 10, maybe 20 years of life left in that actual medium, right? Fiber optics, again, crystal ball, when does teleportation happen, when can Scott beam me in? I don't know, but I'll probably be dirt.
There was a pretty interesting advertisement during the Super Bowl yesterday. I think it was T-Mobile, it guarantees reception because of their satellite connections.
Sure, so T-Mobile has partnered up, I'm, I'm not familiar with the commercial, so I'm going to be speaking off the cuff here. T-Mobile has partnered with Starlink, that's Elon Musk, right, SpaceX, all that good stuff, with their low orbit satellite system. So yes, I'm, if that's what that commercial's talking about, as long as you go upside, yes, you would be able to possibly do that. Here's, I am intimately familiar with wireless technologies and its limitations. Boils down again to frequency, right? There's only so much space in wireless, and T-Mobile right now, if I had to just throw a dart and guess at who owns what the customer base is in your community today, I would say 10% is probably sitting on your telephone company, they're never going to change. T-Mobile probably has 20% because Charter is losing customers to T-Mobile left and right, just like Comcast, who's the largest ISP in the entire country. They're just peeling customers to T-Mobile, mostly because it's an option, they have something else, right? The problem is, is that T-Mobile only has so much spectrum that they're allowed to use, which, being intimately familiar with that, they're likely, if not already, at capacity, very near to capacity within their community already, right? There's only so much spectrum available, and they've, they're using all of it already that they have. So unless they buy another company to get more spectrum, or the FCC starts allocating more spectrum, but again, it's a limited resource, technology, yes, it will help alleviate that, but they're probably already have a customer base that they're going to get. The rest is probably sitting with Charter. That's who, that's who you're going to get your customers from, because if they already have T-Mobile, they're probably not going to move, because you won't be able to be competitive with them, it's just the reality of it. You can definitely compete with Charter, even if it's just the fact that it's not Charter, right? And this comes from me being a customer of Charter, right? So I can speak from personal experience. So, and I assume that's the reason why we're actually here today, right? Is your current providers aren't able to meet your community's needs, so you're coming and you're stepping up to the plate to make that happen. Any other questions for me?
Council? So in your opinion, as somebody who would have best and interest in this, why will this work when others haven't?
Well, so you get to, you've got a trump card that no ISP gets to have, you're the city. That's, that's your number one trump card, right? You have an easy way to communicate to your customer base, you had in Bill Stuffers, you had whatever. My third most largest expense in my company is marketing, right? First is employees, second is infrastructure investment, third is marketing, right? You basically already have a third of the cost it takes to run an ISP taken care of to build Stuffer, right? So you take that out of the equation, that's, that's one of the major reasons why this can succeed, right? Why else can it succeed? Because there's demand, your community is looking for it, right? I think an open access network is an interesting idea, that's why we're here, right? I'm actually already on another open access network, just east of here. I can't say who, NDAs and all that kind of... I can't say who, NDAs and all that kind of stuff, but that's been a very mutually beneficial agreement. That infrastructure owner gets more people using their pipes, they make more money, pays more bills, they build more network. And we get to utilize that infrastructure, make our customers happy. And the, the biggest thing that broadband does is, we're not big enough for our customers to be a number, right? And people tend to appreciate that, right? If I, if I was going to choose, the only reason to choose broadband over any other company, it's our support, which is easy to find out. All you gotta do is a little bit of Google search and look at some reviews and that's everybody's just support, 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 right? That's what you can bring to the table to your community also, right? You're not going to get that with a big company. I don't care who the big company is. It's Comcast, Charter, Lumen, CenturyLink, Windstream, they're too big. Their customers are numbers. You can't, they can't not be numbers. It just falls apart when you get that big. Your community is your community. You're going to be able to support your community, right? And with the agreements that we've been negotiating, there's components within there that allows you as the city, gives you as the city the control, our broadband committee, to have repercussions if we're not supporting your community, if we're not being reliable, if we're not meeting timelines. So you have that control versus now you're at the whim of whatever company decides to, you know, invest infrastructure in your community. So that's why I thank you all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Justin?
Yeah, it is more of a comment than a question, obviously, but I don't look at it as, we're not competing with anyone. We're not competing with Charter. I think what we're doing is we're building infrastructure. You know, from the very first slide Kyle was taking us through infrastructure projects. That's what cities do. Cities don't want to get in the internet business. Lumer doesn't want to get in the internet business, or at least I don't. But we're building infrastructure, not all that different than building the street. This is an airport. When you get to the airport, you don't fly City of Minneapolis, right? You fly Delta, or you fly Southwest. They operate on the city's airport, just like we're going to have ISPs operating on our network. I look forward to Charter leasing space on our network and competing with you. But I don't, I don't look at us as competing with Charter or with anyone.
I guess from that standpoint, there are more people cut their cable because they're always getting their, their services through their internet provider, provider. Does that open up more spectrum for those coaxial companies to lower their prices or offer better deals in the future?
Well, part of, so I gotta be careful I don't get too technical, right? The simple answer is yes. The real, the real answer is they haven't did that. I would assume they have, I'm not intimately familiar with the infrastructure in Lumer, right? But the cable companies have already started moving away from broadcasting their signal across. It's all network stuff now. You might still have some legacy stuff, you know, if you're there or wherever, right? But that's, that's the way of the future because it's just more efficient and easier to integrate with newer technologies. So, you know, Comcast, Charter, everybody has the app now, right? So that's, that's how you get your TV, right? And their set top boxes are basically just running that app in the background and putting up, you know, a pretty menu on it.
I guess to follow up with that, if those revenues start to decline so much, will they need to offset those revenues by raising their internet prices?
Yeah, so what's kind of funny is Comcast actually, again, the biggest ISP in the country, they said, and they're just getting walloped right now. They're peeling about 150,000 customers every three months. And the vast majority of that is going to fiber optic overbills and T-Mobile. And the thing is, is that how they expect to survive this is they want to become cellular company, right? That's their goal, right? So yeah, they're trying to supplement their income with new revenue streams, be that television is a money loser. The city should not even consider going anywhere near that. Don't, you know, YouTube's getting eat your lunch. But, you know, so they're, they're looking for other ways to generate revenue, other services they can offer. Now is, you know, is AI going to be the next big blah, blah, blah? Who knows, you know? I remember when Amazon used to sell books, you know? You know, so who knows, who knows what that next thing is, right? But the fiber don't care. This infrastructure doesn't care. It just, we just know that it's going to go across the internet, right? If it's AI, if it's whatever the next whiz bang thing is, right? It's going to be communication based. That answer your question?
Yes, that answered your question.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
So your company broadband is just wireless now?
No, we also own our own fiber to the home network. You might recall, we're going to be paying that note off this year, so.
Okay, but do you rent space on fiber?
We also have a wholesale agreement on a larger fiber optic deployment that covers a couple of different counties here in Minnesota.
You ever been late on making a payment?
No.
No? Okay. I was just wondering what would happen if you did. Would they shut you off then, or?
Yeah, so let's see, if I don't pay my bills, they usually shut stuff off, right? You know, same, if I don't pay my electric bill, they're going to shut it off, right?
The customers would be upset.
Yes, yes. Now, okay, so here, I think, I think it's important, this is, this is, you're touching on a very important piece and concern that you need to have here. So, and I don't, go ahead and cut me off, I can, I can literally, I will eat up hours of your life, right? If you let me, okay? But the city, you're, you're in this situation where you're going to have a few customers, but your real customers are your constituents, right? It's the city of Lumer, right? And you're being, you've been given the authority to help make this community as strong as it possibly can be. By going with an open access system, you're allowing for broadband, myself, Silverlight, Charter, whoever, telephone companies, whatever, they can all come in and they can access that infrastructure. So if I stop paying my bills, you have the ability to shut me off. Now, what I would, I would caution against, what, what does that really look like, right? Well, what it looks like is, you know, okay, we're going to have conversations, hey, when are you going to pay this bill, yada, 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 right? Obviously, nobody wants that to happen, but let's just, whatever. We're going to look at a worst case scenario. Okay, well, we're going to have to shut you off, right? Well, as a city, the real risk here is that, okay, we have another ISP, we're going to negotiate with them, I can almost guarantee you no ISP is going to say, no, I don't want to touch all of those customers, right? That's not going to be your problem. Your problem's going to be communicating with the end user and getting the end user to be able to communicate with the new ISP, right? Now, I can give you one little glimmer of hope here. Sure, there's been projects and networks and things that have failed in the past. I'm not aware of anyone that has any significant size, and when I say significant, I mean like a thousand customers, that's actually gone dark, right? I don't care if you're talking about, you know, the hoo-ha that's going on with RS fiber, I don't care if you're, you know, whatever, if it's any size at all, somebody wants that revenue, right? So the city really is not, the, the worst case scenario is the city might lose a few months of revenue because that company folds and gets bought up by whoever, right? Once those customers are on the network, they're, they're unlikely to go very far. I will tell you that the only time I ever lose a fiber optic customer is when they
Any other questions?
I can tell you though, on the other side of that coin, my wireless network, last year I lost about half of my customers because I operate Carver County with the Carver Link network. I lost about half of my customers to Carver.
Ouch.
Yeah, no, that was, that was no fun. Still paying my bills though.
Any more questions?
Well, thank you.
Mayor and Council, next I'd like to introduce Silverlight.
All right, I should have got the direction right. Hey, welcome everyone. Appreciate the time and the opportunity. Mr. Mayor, Council, the officials, all the visitors, guests, everyone. I finally put in faces with everyone's names, so I'm a little bit distant. I come over from kind of Wyoming, Idaho region is where we dominate, and I'll get into that a little bit, just to introduce everything. So yeah, first off, just a pleasure to be with you tonight.
What's your name?
Yeah, perfect, Jason Jenkins. I'm the current Vice President of Silverlight Fiber Network as far as all of our open access division of our, or company. So I'll introduce both of that. So Silverlight was formed to do everything we've talked about tonight. We, we openly engage in, in open access consulting, the same as Hometown does. We do build, design, engineering, customer engagement, you know, along with some of the designs that Bolton and Meek provided tonight. However, that's not why I'm here. That's already done, which I commend you, you know, as a city, as a council, as all these resources that have come together so far. Man, I commend you for your vision, your thought, you know, leadership to really pull this together. It's unique. Industry is changing, right? And I wanted, I just was taking notes, right? Fill in kind of the black and white between this, because I push you all a little bit, engage you a little bit farther. We're talking about infrastructure, right? And fiber, it's a clear winner, absolutely hands down. I would, I put it up against anything. And so the reason I say that is because my background is a highly technical field. I've spent 26 years in the industry. I've worked for Comcast, I've worked for Charter, worked for AT&amp;T, and I gave up all that corporate, more of the numbers, just like Anthony was talking about, not only are customers numbers, employees are numbers too, so I got tired of that. Got tired of big corporate America. I worked in the Salt Lake market and I just said, no, I'm done with that. Went to work for Silverstar Communications as a regional incumbent and competitive exchange carrier. And also, we've done everything from wireless, point-to-point wireless of different varieties. We've had our own cellular company. We've done TV, broadband, fiber to the home, all these good things. So we'll get into that, but I just, yeah, that's kind of the background I come from and now clearly fiber going forward, which, like I said, I'm commending you for your vision to get that infrastructure in the ground. Clearly the thing you're doing is you're, you're eliminating the barrier to entry, right? For fiber network. That's what you're doing in a very simple way. You're just making it easy for people to participate at that layer. But the reason I would push you, engage you a little farther, we've talked about an open access fiber network that is primarily for the purposes of internet. That's really all we've talked about tonight, right? It can do so much more. With that infrastructure in place, you can now tap into anything, anything that may be next, right? Beyond internet. Internet's amazing because it's a bunch of web-driven services, applications and everything. We consume data and we interact with, with everything that we need in our life, but think about all the other emergency critical services, think about telehealth, think about whatever may be the next of AI, personal assistance, augmented reality, while a lot of those still will be dominant on the internet, anything that ultimately could become a service in and of itself that requires a network and an endpoint device or something in homes could all be delivered on an open access network as it is proposed so far. No changes would be needed. So there's so much more that you can do. So I said, we also petition as a network operator, we aggregate ISPs, and we are also a participating ISP. So I wanted to jump into a few of our projects. We're, we're doing this now. Yes, I evolved from a highly regulated telco environment. I'm your DSL guy, I'm your copper guy, I'm your cable, we, we've ran cable networks, we've dissolved them, we've overbuilt fiber, we've done all that. And so now, we're positioning for that change. You may have heard of a number of companies over time that failed to adapt and they've been eliminated, right? I was just reading, reminding myself of the story of like Kodak. You all know, right? Back, I think the numbers are, back in 1997, they had 160,000 employees, they held more than 75 to 80% of all the, you know, photographic needs of the entire global market. And in a relatively short period of time, 2012, they filed for bankruptcy because they couldn't adapt to the digital camera environment, the evolution of the cell phone and everything else. It just couldn't change fast enough. So I'm, I'm here to say that I can see that, that I see the lid just cracking off this can. We showed the maps about where open access is now. I think the lid's just about ready to blow wide open. I'm just getting opportunities almost every single day of people that are exploring this interested. So what's happening now? Let me give you some proof and hopefully you can find this as some assurance on what's going on for what I see as successful projects. Feel free to use me as a resource, like I'm here as a resource to you and the town, being here to physically be present, to help you work through this, you know, work session questions, lots of technical background. I can speak about any of the delivery mechanisms, the pros and cons and all that, if we want to get there. So we currently are overbuilding a city in Rexburg, Idaho. That's a university town. I think it scales up to 45,000 with, with a school in session. It's about 20,000 on a normal day when, when a school's out. So BYU Idaho is there. Anyhow, multi-year engagement with them, they spent some ARPA funds to build a core network infrastructure. They own that. We've entered into an IRU, which is a long-term fiber lease agreement to build our own infrastructure off that privately owned to every residence in, in the town. They felt, they, they had a business corridor, they felt like it was already pretty well served by multiple carriers. They did not include that in their build. They felt like it would just be redundant, it was building the same thing again, so they excluded that. So then we, we will, we'll finish the construction of that by the end of this year, have some unique construction constraints and challenges to work through. And just FYI, any project will have its things, you'll have your surprises and you'll have to work through them. Jackson Hole, Wyoming, probably have heard of that, just south of Yellowstone National Park, both a combination of city and also county locations, a lot of private HOAs, subdivisions, developments, we're working with all of them, selling them on the open access environment. We have at least five active projects going on in that town. And then, and that's, that one was completely privately owned by us. So I'm actually giving you example of three different ones. We funded all that, we kind of have our payback period and we're in the same position as you, like, okay, we spend millions of dollars, how do we get the take rates? How do we get the construction done? How do we bring ISPs and be competitive? And then, you know, how does this whole thing pay for itself? So we're sorting all that out as well, but so far, I'm happy to report it's on time, on, actually ahead of time, on budget and things are coming together. So the third and final example is actually part of a developer agreement, so not a city municipality, as a public-private partnership. This was a master planned development just outside of Boise, Idaho. It's, I forget the total number of units, between 3,000 and 4,000 units, I think, multi-zoned for different densities. Anyhow, typical developer, got to know them, they went into a joint trench agreement, which is what happens with every development, right? Anybody can come put their stuff in there. And this is actually one of my pet peeves, right? In kind of Treasure Valley, which is Boise, Meridian and all the surrounding areas, super high growth, they, they have a joint trench agreement that the power company facilitates for them and they're literally building the same network up to seven times right on top of each other. It's literally the same fiber network five or more times right stacked on top of each other. That's my worst pet peeve in this whole thing, like, why? You know how much more we could Do you know how much more we could build, or how many more people we could reach if you didn't, if you just met with an open access model, right? It's the same, same stuff in the ground. Anyhow, the key point takeaway there we found is, once we went joint trench and announced ourselves as an open access network, we were already bringing multiple ISPs with a single network. We found that everybody else actually dropped out. They said, we're no longer interested. So in that development, as it sits right now, actively being constructed, we're the single exclusive provider as an open access network. So you can see the influence that that makes, and I'm sure you'll have, you know, as the city continues to grow, as you annex in more areas, you develop more space, more people, more growth, more jobs, all the goodies. You'll be confronted with these additional expansion, developer things, and kind of sorting that out as well. So just giving you a little bit of future look there. I'm also a participating ISP, a couple of examples. This is a city-owned network. Idaho Falls, Idaho. You can look them up. They built all of their own fiber infrastructure. They did a Phase One test pilot, and then, you know, got council approval. They built a Phase One. They came back and analyzed where they were at. They liked their numbers. Their take rates weren't quite as high as they had hoped, but they still met the minimum threshold. They were still meeting their debt obligations, so they decided to proceed with the rest of it. They reached the rest of all their residential this last year. So I'm one of the participants on that network. And, yeah, our sales team, very aggressive. So I think we're probably in the 35% take rate as an ISP, which is the highest on that network. And also the neighboring one, we've been participating there. It's a neighboring town, also open access. So two active working cases to participate just in that space. Like I said, we kind of do it all, but, you know, if I'm just going to do one or a couple, whatever, just to really build the model. Let's see. This is some of that assurance back. I talked to some things that were being mentioned earlier. In these active open access networks, I am seeing, this is another word of advice. This is a joint venture between, you know, ISPs and the city, municipality, whatever, to really do a lot of public engagement, right, leveraging social media, doing everything you can. Because you've got to do a few things. There was a question earlier. I wrote it down. Why will this work when others haven't, right? A lot of it has to do with upfront, I believe. You've got to educate them on the value of fiber. Like, why fiber? Because that's what they're going to be asking. Why is this important to me? Why should I be doing something with this? We've done a few evolutions in our society, and I love to use the HD example, right? Like, all of a sudden, we have HDTV's and HD pickups and HD, you know, high-quality, high-definition, heavy-duty bits, all HD, right? But all of us had to come to terms over time, like, why was that important to us? Why do we need an HDTV over something else? Like, why should I have that? And now, we wouldn't have anything different, right? It's the de facto standard, and fiber can really become the same thing as it relates to networks and Internet, as far as the way it's delivered. So anyhow, we're seeing active builds, 30% to 40% take rates, which I think is well within the proposed model. That's the targets they presented. We're seeing that. Plus or minus in individual developments based on those engagements. Neighbor talking to neighbor, resolving, you know, questions and different things. You'll see higher or lower take rates in different developments or different areas of town. And then we've seen, you know, as high as another 15% over time, as far as a growth model going into the outline years. When people finally, when I would say they get the message, they're like, oh, yeah, that's why it's important. That's why I need to do this, and, yeah, come sign me up. So I mentioned briefly, I do the kind of Silverlight, which is the brand I really want you to get, you know, your head wrapped around as far as what we do. But it is supported by a parent company called Silverstar. So they've been in operation since 1912. It's a family-owned, private ownership. Like I said, done a little bit of everything. We've been putting fiber in the ground since 1990, some of the very first fiber networks that were ever developed. And I'll get into a little bit of the evolution. There was a request about talking about kind of the why fiber. It's a little bit of the technical details, the things you would be talking about with your friends and neighbors. We've done a lot of builds, a lot of fiber. We've actually done a large, some multi-partner engagements for some long haul fiber to go across the state of Wyoming. We had some federal BTOP grants that we took fiber up and over some Teton Pass, Togety Pass, which is in and around the Grand Teton Mountains. And if you can imagine the federal permitting behind that, people that do permitting, you will know that is not easy. So anyhow, lots of experience. Hopefully, it's some assurance that we bring expertise to these type of projects. Silverstar is positioned, you know, heavy in the air Mountain West, in the Idaho-Wyoming properties, but we do have national connectivity that we leverage for that customer experience. We believe that Internet is not created equal, that your, what do I mean by that? Is your subscription to whatever Internet provider may actually provide you a very drastically different experience. And so, you know, without getting into a lot of details, it has to do with the ability to route your requests to the appropriate applications and where those exist. And the closer I can get the content you're requesting to the network that's serving you, you will have a better experience. Our brains have been programmed largely around Internet speeds, from, say, 10 megabits to 50 to 100 an hour gigabit. Gigabit became the gold standard. Oh, gotta have gigabit Internet, which it is. It's a good experience. However, you could actually have a fiber network with the gigabit service subscription and actually have a poor customer experience. Like, how is that possible? Well, you're having to jump through so many hops between where you're at and where the content is you're requesting, that your experience is very latent, right? And that's literally the difference of latency. Latency is equally as good bandwidth speed, right? So package those together. They're both important. So anyhow, what does that mean? We've always had Minneapolis on our sights. Like I said, we're not a large company. We're not, we're not the Comcast, whatever. That's the people I left because I didn't like that experience, but we're trying to have a national presence. So, you know, I would be petitioning to kind of do a layered network here, which is kind of get into the next slide, that would leverage the resources that are the closest to Wilmer, right? Things, where is the most dominant location for Internet routing? And the content that you want to get, well, it's in Minneapolis. And Chicago are the two closest places to give you the best Internet experience. So of course, that kind of falls all on the ISPs to handle that and their ability to connect with other peers and routes and circuits in order to fulfill that. But that's what we need to do. We need to have redundant, you know, carrier diversity, diverse path into Wilmer to be able to give you the most redundant experience because that's what people don't like, is when the Internet doesn't work. That's a sad day. So, yeah, I have relationships with all the people that serve up content. I have servers for Netflix that sit, you know, right on the network, and this kind of bridges to the ISP side. I'm going to kind of divide this in half, and I want to make sure this part was clear. And in fact, it's probably even more for the benefit of having personal presence here, is the fact that I'm going to propose something new that I don't think the city has considered in the, what's been, you know, outlaid so far. I believe there's a position for a network operator or a network manager. This term is getting sorted out in the industry because it's all new. Anyhow, just like the city has came in to place a fiber optic network to provide infrastructure, you're taking away that barrier of entry. You're providing the capex that's required to do that. I'm proposing to essentially do the same on the network layer, right? So there would still be a bunch of ISPs, and we can sort all that out, and they'll, you know, everybody in, every resident will have their ability to choose. But I would be standing in a position to provide all of the network hardware required to deliver from the NOC building to every home business, MDU, whatever, which would be both equipment there in the NOC and a simple device that sits out of the customer premise. That would be all placed and managed by a network operator. And then I would also aggregate all of the ISPs. So I, as my own company, we have to operate in two different spaces. Once you're a network operator, you have to be totally unbiased, impartial, all of those words, to be able to provide equal opportunity to every interested ISP. And then at the same time, I have an ISP that can participate, and we have to sometimes front those questions directly, like, how can you do that? How can you operate the network but yet have a participating ISP? Well, it's separation of duties and everything that happens with applicable staff that anytime I make notice, you know, two ISPs, it all happens at the same time. Different people are doing different jobs, so it's not really an insider type of deal. And I'll even commit to having a ceiling as far as take rate, right? That my ISP, if I brought in my ISP to participate, I would even put a ceiling on that that would allow others to participate uniformly, right? And I have some competitive advantage. So anyhow, I, what I see as benefits from this and me doing this, and there's a financial model there. There's a certain amount of revenue that I would be, well, back up. So the ISPs would really own the engagement. The customers would be theirs, right? Their customers. They sell a certain Internet subscription. They collect the money for that, and then we've got to work out the backend. So certain money would flow back to Silverlight. We would have a certain revenue that meets our business model and takes care of the network layer. And then a certain amount that is committed within the operator agreement would come back to the city to meet their obligations. We were talking a little bit about those costs per user earlier. So what I think comes from this is the fact that not everybody needs to populate their equipment. Not everybody needs to run their fiber cross-connects. So all the ads moves and changes. Oh, this customer is connected. This person, we've got to change a physical cross-connect. We're going to change them to here, or change them to that, and we've got to audit this every month to know what our back billing is, right? So I add a logical layer. I take care of all the network, all the physical elements, all taken care of. Then everything moves up to a logical layer, which is a front-end marketplace. It's a website that customers can go on, get educated about their, you know, fiber, the Connect Wilmer initiative. They can get educated there. They can see participating ISPs. They can see packages, pricing, everything, and I, it's fine. I'm happy to aggregate ISPs to bring them to Wilmer. I'm happy to work with people that are locally that want to participate. I think I'm doing the same. I think I'm eliminating capex costs. I think I'm eliminating that barrier of entry. And if we're all not placing equipment, I should be able to lower costs to the consumer to some degree. So I think this provides, this proposal would provide, you know, a better experience to the end user. They have a single place to see all of their options. They don't have to go to, you know, do whatever. I can do automated provisioning. As soon as they select something and the infrastructure is ready to go, it will be turned on immediately. No physical work would have to be done after that initial install. If they chose to change, most of these go with no contracts. So if mid-month or whatever, they want to say, hey, this ISP experience not working real well. They can go back into the marketplace, choose somebody else. The system will automatically convert them to the other ISP, and they take off and go. So nobody had to do anything. I think the last big point in this is it brings up a lot of visibility that I think the city will be seeking, based on the total number of active participants. And now, me, I can bring a software layer with me that leverages that marketplace that we can actually deploy. Basically, Wilmer is its own site, and from day one, we could start introducing that to potential residents to put in basically a survey, we call it. They're basically just completing a survey that says, hey, yes, if you build this, I'm interested. At what point we allow them to pick their ISP, we could do that. But you will instantly, I'm happy to share this visibility based on our potential future engagements, to know exactly the people, their specific addresses. They've expressed interest. They've selected an ISP. They're within Phase One, whatever. They all get eventually converted to orders. It would work through the process of getting their service drop installed, their service activated, their equipment placed. We could know basically any customer at any time exactly which phase they're in. And then you will also know exactly what your active take rate is, real time. Like, this is your take rate as of today, with total homes passed that are built, total people that have signed up, percentage that have went to each of the ISP. This is information that we hold as that network operator, so. There's another progressive flow here that looks at the orders. Like I said, it's a four-step process to gather that initial survey, sign up, choose your provider, work through the draft construction, and the provider activation. We can tell exactly which, like I said, even down to the development they're in, which, yeah, that's pretty small, but I think probably in your handout as well, in your package, want to really look at that. I didn't mention, we have four, we have four active ISPs right now on the networks that we operate. This is a controversial topic. I know of open access networks out there today that have upwards of 17 to 20 different options. I think that's way too many. It's just, it's too much for the human to just really sort through. And how does 20 different providers differentiate? How do they stand out from their competition, right? And how do you even plan on getting a possible take rate, depending on the scale of the network, to even make the business model work, you know? So I would say something more along the lines of maybe three, four at the very most, you know, for Wilmer as far as population density, take rate stuff. So that people can actually look at it. There's enough opportunity to compete. There's enough opportunity to make revenue. It makes sense for everybody because that's the end. Everyone's got to win here, or people will just start cycling out. So we're in a position of changing the network operator model as well. We actually vet all of our participating ISPs. They do need to meet a certain list of standards, and if they can't do that, then they kind of still on the waiting list. And I have actually a handful on my waiting list that have not been allowed to participate yet. But then again, I don't think the number is high. We're actually holding out spot number five. Pursuing conversations and several things to have more of a national provider brand. Like I said, this open access network, you know, being built, could have anybody. Spectrum is dominant here. They are more than willing to, you know, apply just like anybody else to leverage this fiber network. I totally believe that, you know, cable networks and the DOCSIS technology that they use to get it to your home does have a certain amount of life and that they are continually moving on getting that fiber closer and closer to the home, right? So there's really not, not a significant need to overbuild fiber once there's an open access fiber network present, right? And I do see competition slowing that overbuild because of open access. So anyhow, a couple of thoughts. Just break up these slides because I'd love to jump into the questions. That's what means the most to you. Just, hey, what's important to me? How do I make sense of this? Because I threw a lot of information at you. There was a specific, you know, thought request around cable, just because it's so dominant here. Like I said, I spent a lot of years. I worked with the largest cable operator in the country, operated DOCSIS networks, so how do I size this up? There's an evolution, right? And DSL went through its evolution. DOCSIS Cable, which is just an abbreviation for how cable modems work, basically went from an evolution, and we kicked some butt, you know, back in the day when cable first came out, you know? Over the typical dial-up days, the very first cable modems competing with DSL, it was no competition, right? It was easy to get customers. And we dominated for a lot of years in the cable industry, and then, you know, things evolved. And I love the space of everything. They pushed the limits on copper cable, both coax and copper twisted pair. They have squeaked every possible bit out of that system, right, to get even more. And I love the evolution of wireless. You know, it has its place. Anthony was sharing some things. I love the place where, you know, you get point-to-point wireless. You know, the spectrum challenges, pushing kind of that density of modulation, put as many bits as you can. Millimeter wave spectrum, high-density 5G, that's kind of the T-Mobile thing, is getting into high-density 5G and beyond. That's the high-density microcell But that's the, the high density microcell deployment. Those will still require lots of fiber uplinks to make that work, just as the reality. Even though it's still a cellular wireless plan, we'll have a lot of fiber backhaul to make that work. So anyhow, finishing up on cable. If you find that a cable operator is stuck right around that gigabit service, it's likely that they're up against some major upgrade. There's some significant upgrades that have to happen from like DOCSIS 3.0 to 3.1 and especially from 3.1 to 4.0 that taps into your multi-gigabit with a higher upstream, I should say. Both are rated up to 10 gigs. But of course, you know, that's something that is to a specific modem. But then you also have the design of how the cable goes out in the neighborhood, how many homes it serves. You have a lot of shared perspective there on bandwidth. And you might notice that, you know, peak times from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, that's when things will be the most challenging. So anyhow, for cable to tap into multi-gig speeds, they got to do some major upgrades. Got to do a lot of shifting with channels and spectrum, changing equipment, changing, you know, equipment in their head end, equipment in the homes. A lot of things have to happen and they come at a big cost. Oh, and the other, I think honestly, full transparency here, like I said, I ran all of these networks. I support Anthony's comments too. I, infinite, or intimately aware of the benefits and the weaknesses on almost any of these. And they each have their space, they do. So the last big thing is in cable world, they'll call it an HSC or a hybrid fiber coax network, which is a bunch of cable or fiber out to a certain node. Then it's all cable from there. But the problem, big problem is, is it's a powered system. It's a bunch of electric amplifiers that require power. And so anything to do with electrical current and powering and electronic modules and all this stuff, they fail a lot. It's very tedious to keep this running. Now, that said, they're better than they've ever been in their whole life. And you can be the witness of that. But there's still a lot of challenges in keeping a powered system up. And that's one of the biggest differences now going to fiber. It's a completely passive system. There's no powered devices required to get from A to B. We front the electronics, we go through some splitters, we go out to a subset of homes. We have, you know, dedicated devices at the homes that talk on certain frequencies. Talked a little bit about that earlier too. Anyhow, and this allows a lot higher capacity to move to the home. It's went through its long evolution to, this is maybe a good image on the far left side. Fiber, these are all acronyms, fiber to the node, fiber to the curb, fiber to the building, fiber to the home. That's, that's all that happened. And when you hear these, if you look them up on the internet, just means the fiber got closer and closer to the end user. That's all that happened. And we did that over an evolution of time from PON as a passive optical network. The first series of that was B PON, G PON moved into gigabit range, XG PON, XGS PON, 10 gig PON, 50 gig PON. So this is about, back to the question of evolution over time. How long are we going to get out of this? Well, my proposal as a network operator, and this is standard for us now, is to deploy an XGS PON overlay, which is a 10 gig PON service. Now, if you're the technician in me, you would say, okay, I tested that, right? Yeah, I have. I've tested down to the exact bit. It's like 8.2 to 8.3 gigabits of throughput up and down. So even though it's labeled 10 gig PON, 8.2. But who's, you know, worried about that? The technicians are. But still far superior. It's also symmetrical bandwidth. A lot of other services you may subscribe to will dedicate more bandwidth to the downstream than they do the upstream. Fiber now, on the newest overlays, some of the other one were asymmetrical, it was offset. Everything new going forward with fiber networks, PON, that the ISPs would be using are all symmetrical bandwidth, same up, same down. So, and then right on its heels, 50 gig PON, which could be up to 50 gigs of internet service, could be delivered to a single home. It's already in its works of deployment in some of the first metro markets today, 2025, right? So that, and then beyond that is already in development. So back before, there is life in the physical fiber. If you still had fiber that was put in back in, you know, the 1980s, you'll struggle with it a little bit. It's, it's like the quality of glass and everything that was used in it can be pushed so far. The fiber that's being released over the last 10 or 12 years, pretty consistent now. I don't know the trance of the, the optical transceivers we talked about. I don't know that they've found a limit with what they can push. Basically, you start pushing so many pulsating light that it starts reflecting back at you. And that creates a noise problem, but more technical stuff. But anyhow, lots of life in the current fiber. You'll be able to scale that up. We're already doing 400 gigabit links all the time, you know, for main backhaul stuff. So those already work today on existing fiber. There's transceivers for it and everything. So this is just the variety to deliver it to the end user in a passive system. So anyhow, stop there. Is the, yeah, next is kind of next steps. Very open to any questions. I know we're actually getting close to the two hour block that we had specified. But if I can be of any help to any questions, I would be happy to.
I saw my first question that asked earlier about you've worked with other communities, kind of, you know, the possibility of other communities in our area wanting to kind of extend our networks or give these people these services as well, and what those agreements look like. And I mean, just from what you've seen, what's the financial gain for the city of Wilmer? For, for a community jumping on the network?
Yeah, so the first part would I guess be the design and build and some type of, we call it joint powers or some other thing to be able to collectively bring that together. If you wanted them to bring some buy-in, you would probably have the leverage to be able to pursue those municipal bonds and other things. Smaller cities may not even be in a position to do that or be willing to take that on. You could leverage some of that for them. You could probably scale some of the network operating agreements or the consulting based agreements. It all kind of fit under the umbrella that you've already established. So they're not having to go pursue all that themselves. Because that's, I mean, face it, you know, different county commissioners or different small town council, they don't have the time to dedicate to that. They're just way too much in their own personal lives and business or whatever. So yeah, I'm sure you could structure, there's still going to be some interconnect. There's, there's fiber that, you know, goes in and out of Wilmer. There's probably other ways we could pursue the connectivity. But then the, or between towns, but then you would have to actually work out the arrangement to build the same fiber network, the same overlay in some of these smaller towns and get this all packaged up together. I'd probably really honestly defer that to kind of the consulting base to work through that. I, this is just all my ideas off the cuff, but there, there's definitely potential. And then they could say, because that's what's happening, right? With the ones I have so far, they're like, hey, I heard about what you did over here. I like that. I want to do that.
I can estimate on like what the cost per user would be, you know, like. So again, I'm just trying to get a sense of like, of a, of a community in suburban Wilmer decides that they want to tag along with this project. We build that out, but now they're using our NOC and the heart of their network is ours. And we're going to get a dollar for every user or $5.
Yeah.
Like any sense of what you've seen?
Um, well, I mean, you could structure the same agreement that you have with your people in town, right? There, when we start pushing that out, so make sure I qualify your question a little bit. When you, when you tapped into suburbs of Wilmer, like that's basically county people, right? Is that basically expanding the network beyond city limits? Is that what you're pushing towards as compared to? It could be neighboring towns, I guess.
I think probably more likely neighboring towns, just from what we've seen.
Okay. So I've seen some of both. Our City of Rexburg project already entered into a joint agreement with the county to have access to fiber and start pushing that network, open access network out into the county. And they worked out agreements between the county and the city to do that. So their build for that's going to happen down the road. They're kind of wanted to see how things went in the city first, but they've already entered into other agreements. Price per user, I said, I, as long as it's connected to all the same infrastructure, your cost model is the same, right? And we boiled that down to a connection cost per user. The city has positioned, hey, we need this much to, to run the model. Me as a network operator, I'd need a certain amount too. But I, I think the exact same pricing that they're going to be fronted with in the marketplace to choose an ISP to cover all that, I think it's going to be identical. So the city would be seeing the same revenue returns on those minus whatever you might reach for an agreement with a neighboring city. Hopefully I'm capturing what you and sharing here.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. And at the same time, I'm not sure that we want to be the, I don't know if it's going to, I don't. I'm good for not speculating.
It's all good. We're thinking big here, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Oh, Tom? I'm all.
No, it's, it's okay. Right. Mr. Member of the council, we didn't have, I'll pause if there are any questions from the council. I know we did get some council, or some questions from council member Gardner too that I forwarded to the council prior to the meeting. I've been taking some notes. I think we tried to address, or I think some of these questions have been addressed, but I would like to highlight some questions from, that were forwarded to us earlier today. One of the questions was that it was noted in previous engagement events that fiber had, fiber had added value, fiber connections had added home. Sorry. Fiber connections have shown that they can provide an increase to property value. Question is, does this mean the county assessor automatically increased the taxable value of any home or business that chooses that fiber internet under the proposed plan? The question goes on, if so, it seems like the backdoor tax increase. I'd like to address the question in a couple of different parts. So in Minnesota, taxable value of a property is based on its assessed market value, which considers factors like, oh, a number of factors, but could be recent sales in nearby properties. The sale of surrounding properties can affect the taxable value of a property by providing comparables that may cause the assessor to increase or decrease the property's value. But really the property, the process for assessing a property is dynamic and depends on both local market conditions and specific, specific property characteristics. So if you have an asset on your property that is valued more, your, your home value would be increased. So there is an opportunity or there have been examples that we've shared in recent presentations. The one that comes to mind is Chattanooga, Tennessee, their fiber bill. They did receive up to estimate about a 5% property value increase. It's not necessarily, I wouldn't call it a, a backdoor tax increase, but a realization that if you have an asset to your property, your home could be considered to be valued at a higher cost or higher value. Council, please, if there's any questions that I'm missing, I believe a lot of them were addressed in the meeting. One question too that was brought up, Councilmember Sholness talked about this little bit of, why is, why is this project going to be a success when others have failed? Two of the examples that were pre, or asked about, was the city of Monticello and Lake County. If the council recalls back in March of 2024, a work session, this letter was submitted to the council in March of 2024, but it was provided at a work session, and this was from the now retired city administrator from Monticello, refuting a lot of the claims that that project was a failure. Again, did a little bit more research from the Blandon Foundation on an article that was written about the city of Monticello and their fiber network and how it, how the, how it was a success. Did the project go through some struggles? Yes, but it ultimately is, is serving the community, is profitable. It has been estimated to save, I believe this article was written in 2019. So this was after all these changes have been made on the network, has saved the city residents approximately $2 million a year in telecommunications costs since it's been in operation. I can provide this letter from the retired city administrator, Jeff O'Neill, from the city of Monticello, but it was included in the council packet back in early 2024. The Lake County example is another interesting one. But I might have to ask Kyle to help me out on this one, if that's all right. The Lake County fiber project is a different beast altogether. This, some of the key pressure points on this project had to do with maybe some poor financial planning, overestimation, overestimating the market demand and really the lack of a sustainable revenue model. And really despite the ambitious goals of providing that high-speed internet over such a rural area, part of the state, northeast part of the state, the project was not ultimately able to attract enough customers to cover its operating costs. You kind of briefly touched on it. Is there anything more that we should add about that specific project?
Ditto.
Okay. So, so I think that what we're trying, what I'm trying to convey with that specifically is that there are just as many success stories as there are failures. The opportunity that we've had by taking our time and doing our due diligence with this project is that we have had an opportunity to look at both those successes and failures and give the project to the city of Wilmer, to the city council on, and scrutinizing what works and what doesn't work. This isn't a, a sales pitch or a, should be viewed as a no risk, right? I mean, there's always going to be risk. If I could guarantee, there's not a ability for us to guarantee that this is going to work 100%. But I think the work that you saw tonight, council members, Mayor and council, is a testament to the due diligence that broadband committee has done, consultants with Old Town Fiber, with Bolton and many of the staff, and you as, as council members having these meetings and enabling us to keep moving forward. I hope that, that work shows and I hope that instills confidence to the council to make a decision, whichever way you select to move in the future. Lastly, there was a question about long-term financial projections. Those are included in front of you and I did make public copies as well. So these are these documents that are available for the public as well. What that shows is a 40% take rate. Again, this is a, it's just on paper, so it's static, it's not moving. But there's an Excel sheet that allows to make some adjustments. But what it allows us to do, instead of desired take rate on, at 40% or higher or lower, allows us to include phases one, two, and three. And really shows or gives you an idea of instruction costs or all the expenses that go into it, the lease payments and subscriber, user fees and lease income. That would be a part of the network and gives the council an idea of the tax impact that would have that X amount of years. Each phase put in and there's an opportunity here to, or there's always the opportunity to go more in depth on it at another meeting. But we wanted to, one of the comments that Kyle and I, Morehead, were having today was the level of, how much information, you know, through, what was the, through a fire hose or through a garden hose? And there isn't really a happy medium. So we're trying to balance that the best we can and not get information overload. But we need respect and understand the need for the council and the community to see this in full transparency. So this will be, again, is provided tonight in copies and will be uploaded to the council packet after this meeting tomorrow.
Kyle, what's the difference between the three pages on the handout?
Great question. So each page indicates a addition of each phase. So if you look in this part of the document right here, where it says phase one, phase two, phase three, each page adds another phase.
So do you know anything about the litigation that's going on now with the GR Fiber, or something? He brought from Winthrop, Arlington, Green Isle. I know Winthrop, they were just in court, and they have to pay $95,000 a year until the year 2037. The other communities are still figuring it out with the court system, so.
That's a great question, Councilmember Fegley. I'm not up to date on current litigation with that project. It was, yes, fiber, GR?
It's RS fiber.
RS fiber?
Yep. They're right in the middle of my network, so I'm real familiar with that project.
Your fault, Ben, huh?
Not, I'm not going to take all the blame, but you know, if they built a better network.
Yeah, I'll finish with this, counsel, for the, just to, again, for full transparency here today, West Central Tribune posted an article that, the city receiving a letter, a proposal from Charter to have a potential project in the industrial park. City staff, Mayor Reese, Councilman Veras, do intend to meet with Charter this week, and will bring those, will bring a report or something back to the city council to make, again, the full council aware of the conversation, and just wanted to keep you up to date, essentially, just to make the council aware.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, Mayor.
Any other questions?
My question was going to be about the letter that was received from Charter, and I didn't see the West Central Tribune's, did they post the letter in there, or do you have any other comments about the information that was in the letter, or do you wish to wait till after you've met with them?
I don't, I've read through the article very quickly, it sounded, looked like it was, Tribune received a copy of the letter. Tribune received a copy of the letter. I would, at this time, wish to hold any, or more comments until they actually sit down and meet with Charter.
Okay.
All right. Let's end the letter. A work session, motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.